Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. The first item on tonight's agenda is Mayor's Announcements and City Managers' Announcements. I only have one announcement this evening, and I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Adams for her appointment as Vice Chair of the Valley Metro Board. So congratulations, Vice Mayor. That is all of my announcements, though. And I'll turn to our City Manager for her announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one announcement, and I'm so happy to be here with many of our employees who've been part of the educational cohort. Tonight, I'd like to congratulate our most recent graduates who participated in the city's educational partnership that we're very proud of, and our tuition reimbursement at the city. We have two cohorts, with a graduating Master's Degree of Public Administration from NEU, and the other cohort graduating with a Master's Degree of Operational Leadership from NEU. So I'm going to ask the students, or the graduates, I should say no longer students, to come join me for a photo with Mayor and Council. I'll call your names. The following city employees graduated with their Master's in Public Administration. Will those in attendance please join me up front and be acknowledged? Brittany Nelson. Chase Wallman. Christopher Santini. Erin Fillmore. And Gloriana Sauer. Rachel Britner. Ray Hagan. Sabrina Nelson. Sarah Kwong. Stephen Grover. Tina Sleeper. Tro Wiora.
Congratulations. Good work.
I'd now like to acknowledge our Master's of Organizational Leadership graduates. Will those in attendance please join me up front for the acknowledgement? And that is Patrick Mauer. Evelyn McNeil. Ali Sandoval. And our own Erin Villacuena. Congratulations to our graduate. Special thanks to our...
Congratulations. Great work.
Before we take a picture, I just wanted to publicly also thank Jeremy King, our HR staff, Sarah Jenkins, Jeremy King, who organized and supported the program. And if Rebecca Striscos of the audience, please join us.
There you go. No! Where are you?
Let's have you come on in.
Come right here.
Hurry up, Jeremy!
This.
Jeremy, sneak in just a little bit that way. Yes, a little bit more. Right guy now, I guess. Perfect. All right, everybody, big smiles. Wow. Big smiles. One, two, three. Don't blink.
Oh, I just did.
Eyes open, big smile. One, two, three. There we go. One more like that, we're done. Gotcha.
One more eye.
Wait, 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 wait.
Three, two, one. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations again, guys. Good work.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Any other announcements this evening?
No other announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Then we will go forward here to, once again, talk about the guidelines for proper conduct at city council meetings, which are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance this evening. But we are now going to play the video ensuring the proper protocol at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Not only will the mayor recess the meeting, he will swap out non-functioning chairs during the break. You wear many hats at a job like this. Got to take care of my vice mayor. So, all right. So, we're going to move on now to item number three, which is Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time. For the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I've got some cards here in front of me, and I will go ahead and take them all now. The first speaker I have is Anne Till. Madam Clerk, is she in the virtual room yet?
No, she is not.
Okay. Since this is about the ADU issue, I'll come back around to her at the point that we get to that item on tonight's agenda. The next speaker I have this evening is Katie Bulligetts.
I do not see Katie either. She just submitted her card online.
Okay, so she...I will call her then during 4D to see if she's there, because I know some of the folks may have been waiting for the exact item to come up, so... And the last speaker I know I've got here, because I can see her from where I'm sitting, is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You can't imagine what I'm going to speak about, I'm sure.
Okay. Game on!
I sound like a broken record on how important it is to gain some control of the spread of stink net. It is highly unlikely that we will ever eradicate it, but I do believe we can manage the spread. Education is the key. Educating the greater community about why, when, and how to remove stink net from their property. Hopefully, the city can help in the future provide a way that they can obtain that education. Stink net seeds will continue to germinate from December through May, depending on the growing conditions. There are areas in Evelyn Hallman Park I have gone back to pull three times during the season. It will grow differently in different areas. I've seen it grow to the size of a small shrub, over two feet tall, and I've seen it less than a half an inch with a mature flower head smaller than the size of a pin, or the head of a pin. I have seen it in sandy soil, rocky soil, loamy soil, in full sun and partial shade under mesquites, palaverdes, creosots, and I've seen it in turf, an extremely adaptable invasive plant. Most important to me is educating everyone on how to avoid spreading the seeds, especially in the preserve. Besides water and strong wind, which we have no control over, it is spread by wheels, people's shoes, their clothing, and pets' paws and fur. That is why educating the users of the preserve to stay on established trails and to keep their dogs on leashes. This is why the Rangers are so important. The concern about how pre-emergence affect native plant and seed germination is a valid one, and you'll hear more about that in Alex's presentation. But it has to be weighed against the health of the area where it will be used. If you have an immense concentration of stink net, I believe it is a valid use of the pre-emergent, because stink net chokes out the native seedlings and depletes the nutrients in the soil. Once some control is gained in a natural area, it can be revegetated and hopefully in such a way that native plants can compete with stink net. Just as a side note, now that the Southwest Vegetative Land Management Group has recommended the use of pre-emergent in highly concentrated areas of stink net, pre-emergence will be in very high demand, so we need to keep that in consideration. But anyway, thank you for listening to me once again on this subject.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. Also, I've got another card that I just received. I believe Sean Swisher is in the virtual audience. Eric, I'm reading your mind, man. I got you.
Mayor Woods, I am, but I...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sounds good. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Well, Mayor Woods, I did overhear earlier that you were allowing some folks to speak immediately before the item in question, which in this case would be the ADUs. Would I be able to defer my time until then?
Absolutely. Just didn't want to make you wait. If you wanted to jump off, we can bring it up at the time, so...
Thank you very much.
You got it, but Swisher, thank you. All right. Any other cards, Madam Clerk, before I go forward?
No additional cards. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Then we will then defer the speakers when the actual items come up, which brings us to item number 4A, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission Update and Recommendations Presentation. Adrian, if you want to also make sure to introduce your esteemed guest this evening, who she and I go way back.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you know, my name is Adrian Casio. I am a supervisor in Community Health and Human Services. This is my sixth and last year as the MIAC advisor. And so I have an incredible honor of being here with some of our commissioners, who are going to introduce themselves in a moment. We have two who are here virtually. One is out of state, one is out of the country, but they are here. And they're going to speak about annual updates and recommendations, so without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Rucha.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Rucha Sate. I am the MIAC chair, a recent graduate of Coronel Sol, and this is my third and final, unfortunately, final year on MIAC.
And we got Tamsin, you're up.
Yeah, sorry. My mic wasn't working for a second. Hi, I'm Tamsin. I just graduated from Tempe Prep, and it is also my last sadly year on MIAC, and I'm our vice chair this year.
I was also wondering...
Hello, Mayor and Council. Now you can go, Mayor Woods, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no. I apologize. I would say, Adrian, if it's too high, too, you can always lower the desk. I don't know if it's too high. I have no idea. But if not, you can leave it. So, anyway, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Ratih Tabatadze. I am a rising senior at Gilbert Classical Academy. This was my second year serving with the commission, and I was the project management chair.
Okay, so I'll start off with a brief history of what MIAC does. We were established in 1980 to address the challenges that youth face. We do this by giving high school students the opportunity to advocate for themselves and provide input on initiatives. We currently are made up of 30 motivated high school students.
So we did a lot this year, but some new things that happened were we had the opportunity to work with Vision Zero marketing, and we did a really cool survey about using Gen Z phrases on the road to make teenagers safer drivers, which is super interesting. And then we also did some new youth engagement activities, which Adrian will go into later. And we also presented to many leadership organizations, committees, and went to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns.
We want to express our appreciation for the following departments, offices, and partners for working and engaging with MIAC this year. We recognize that the city of Tempe is addressing and has made progress in the priorities that we have chosen this year. We hope that the input that we provide today can be used to guide your decisions and foster further dialogue and collaboration with MIAC commissioners.
And quickly, I want to thank Mayor Woods for doing a promo video with us. It was exciting, so that was on the screen here, but it didn't make them mark. Maybe for better.
Probably a wise decision.
One of the main events that we focused on this year was the new Tempe Youth Talks event, where MIAC commissioners got to give TEDx-style talks about the priority issues. We had a lot of city officials and education leaders appear there, and we also had a panel of local experts. We had roughly 150 students attend, and we were very pleased to see that they were very motivated to ask questions to the panel experts. We had a designated Q&amp;A time that we decided to even extend more because so many students were interested, and we saw them even asking questions during our lunchtime. So overall, the event was a huge success, and we got a lot of positive feedback, and we look forward to continuing in the upcoming years.
Yeah, and then this year, we had four youth priority topics: environmental sustainability, DEI, unhoused solutions, and teen mental health. And we, as a commission, decided on these. And then we also created surveys and ran them that eighth graders and 12th graders took, and that's how we got all of our data for this presentation.
Now, as the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee, a lot of our focus was on exploring youth experiences and concerns on climate change, focusing on issues such as water scarcity. Through our student surveys, we got a lot of great feedback, and we're very pleased to learn that many students are not only aware and concerned of the broad issue of climate change, but also more specific local issues such as water conservation, wildlife protection, and extreme heat. Based on the surveys, we also learned that many students, including the ones you're presenting, have really dealt with personal issues surrounding these types of problems. We've seen a lot of students have problems with extreme heat, with water scarcity, and it's good to see that students are very aware and are trying to do their best to get involved in the spaces that they're given opportunities for. Now, through these experiences and through this feedback, we have decided to give a couple of recommendations to city council. We would like to acknowledge that we know that city council has been very aware and very active in trying to combat these environmental issues, and we're really appreciative of it. But we also do recognize that it's very important for new initiatives and new actions to be taken, which is why recommendations are some very new and less further pursued ideas. However, this year, we would like to emphasize the continuation and expansion of our existing opportunities. We have seen the Youth Action Plan and the Rain to Roots program in specific be very successful and very impactful in combating a lot of the issues that we see. And as the Rain to Roots ambassador myself, I've truly seen how this new program has been able to make a difference in the community. I think with more youth involvement, such programs can make a huge difference in combating these issues, allowing youth to be more active and more aware of the issues that are going on in the community.
So this year, the DEI Subcommittee focused on educating youth on the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and equipping them with strategies to promote them in their own communities. So at our Tempe Youth Talks event, I spoke about how crucial DEI is for women in STEM and the tools I use to promote it in my own high school robotics team. We then surveyed students to see how DEI is needed in their communities and what they have experienced. Out of the 50 responses we received, 62% have experienced microaggressions and 44% have experienced racism. These numbers are alarming and go to show the importance of DEI to youth. With this data, we have some suggestions, one of them being to continue having open dialogue by providing opportunities and platforms for underrepresented individuals. For example, this can be done by ensuring diversity on city committees, commissions, and boards. Yeah, so then our next Subcommittee was aiding unhoused population. And what we kind of focused on was education about city unhoused solutions involving youth and aiding with efforts to combat homelessness. And then we tried to survey unhoused and housing unstable youth about their experiences. I thought this statistic, that 14% respondents experienced homelessness and food insecurity, was really interesting, because out of those 52 students, that's like a large portion. And I also thought that our student feedback was really interesting on our surveys, because it really showed that these are students who are experiencing these issues, and the personal stories really stuck out to me. All of these solutions were really important to our Subcommittee. We heard these in our surveys from all of the different teens all across Tempe. But the one that we thought was the most important was implementing solutions to make paying for rent easier for youth, especially young adults living on their own. Because as a university town, and kind of as the housing market is being as crazy as it is, especially for Gen Z, we had the opportunity to have people present about the secondary dwelling units, and we thought that was really interesting, and kind of ideas on how to creatively solve this problem of Gen Z not being able to house themselves out of college, starting their career. That was something we found really important. I'm also presenting on this one, because we have four, and there's three of us. So our last Subcommittee is teen mental health, and its focus was on student experiences with mental health and stressors. We had less responses for this one because of state regulations, but I thought that the statistic on the bottom was super interesting, that like a large majority of respondents report that resources were readily available. So I think this is like a positive takeaway for the city and for like the place that we live, that 67% of people responded that they felt their mental health was taken into consideration, they had resources. And yeah, our one recommendation from this Subcommittee is to explore the Mental Health Friendly Cities Framework, which has been adopted by cities such as Seattle and Sacramento. The Mental Health Friendly Cities Framework was kind of instated after the UN put teen mental health as one of their, like, things that they think is important a few years ago. And it includes things like destigmatization of mental health resources, reaching out to populations like the LGBTQ+ community who needs extra support in this area due to like stigmas, things like that. And then, yeah, so this is anticipated impact, not just for teen mental health, but for all of our Subcommittee groups. And the one I would focus on is the stronger youth workforce and talent pipeline retained in the city of Tempe, because like, for example, if I could, if I'm graduating from ASU and I can move into a secondary dwelling unit that I can afford, we're much more likely to retain Gen Z kids who are coming straight out of ASU or are great talent. And then investing in holistic and youth-led strategies may decrease city costs of reactive services. So for example, like the Hope Team or Care Seven, if kids are housed and their mental health is being addressed in school, then those services are much less needed.
So as I mentioned earlier that this is going to be my last year as the MIAC advisor, I'm still here in the city, but we're going to have Delaina La Force who is here in the audience will be taking that on and moving forward. So we're really excited to have her supporting MIAC, and I'll hand it over to you, Ratih.
Yeah, so despite our certain personnel change, we're going to continue our actions as usual. We're going to release our MIAC annual report, which details all of our actions throughout the year. Also, over the summer, we're going to review the new MIAC applications and get some new commissioners on board. And then we're also going to follow up and engage with a lot of the city departments that we worked with throughout the year to see how our studies paid off or if there's any other actions that we might want to take in their support.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your continued support. MIAC appreciates the opportunity to provide our input, and we hope that our data and suggestions are considered in the future.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great presentation, as always. It's actually one of the presentations that I look forward to each and every year is from the MIAC commissioners. I think not only are the presentations and the information great, but there are obviously... There are several things I say every year that we actually take as a council and staff to implement from the recommendations that you make. So I just want to tell you that, you know, we make a very, very important point to not ever take reports that people give us and just put them in a file cabinet somewhere. We really try to make sure that these recommendations are being used throughout the city, and obviously also to make sure that our youth stay engaged in the things that we are involved in here in the city of Tempe. So I just wanted to personally thank you and see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Councilman Garland?
I'm so impressed with what you guys do, and I think I probably told you that and the others so many times. I'm so impressed with what you guys have done, what you've come up with on your own, and how important that this work is to you. And I love bragging at National League of Cities when we go there about the impact that you guys have. You're not just a youth group that gets together and talks about things. You are a youth group that gets together and talks about things, but then makes action items, comes to the council and makes presentations. I've never been very shy in my life, but I don't know if I would have been able to do what you guys do at your age. I'm just so impressed with you guys, and there's so many great things out there for you ahead, all the graduating kids. But thank you so much for what you've done for the city.
Thank you. Councilman Raj?
I just want to say, you guys, you know how proud I am of you guys. Proud on so many different levels. I just want to know, you guys are going to be coming to Tempe Union soon to do the same presentation, correct?
Yes, correct.
Well, I'm inviting the council members, if they would like to be in the audience, to be proud of our kids. I will definitely invite you. I think it's our next governing board meeting, which is Wednesday, next Wednesday, for you guys to come out and see it. So, you know, I love you guys, Adrian. Me and you worked together for a long time. I'm going to miss you. I know you're moving up to another position, and I can't wait to see who comes out of the next commission, so I'll be ready for you guys.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilman Burchin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, and those that are virtual right now. Where are they? What country?
Tamsin's in Montana, and Ratih is in Georgia, the country.
Oh, excellent. A long time ago, somebody talked about the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, and I'm going to add on to what Councilmember Garland said, but I'm going to adjust it a little bit. You're not a youth commission, not simply a youth commission. You're a Tempe Citizen Commission. You happen to be comprised of Tempe youth, but that's a perspective that we all value on the council, and I know staff do as well. So know that we appreciate your work and your leadership in the community. Thank you, and thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, you are the future leaders. You're the future of being up here. So I want you to really realize that you're becoming leaders at a young age, and that's very important. So congratulations and thanks for all your hours of volunteering and for the excellent presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Raj?
I'm going to give you guys a challenge. I want to challenge you guys to bring in different commissioners, but I want to challenge you guys not to bring in just the commissioners at the top. I want you to bring in some people that are in the middle or trying to struggle and bring them into this fold, too, because I think there's leaders out there that we miss all the time, because we're always looking up here, and we need to be looking throughout. And there's a lot. And I want to, I'm challenging each and every one of you as commissioners to bring someone in who would not be in that circle, who would not sit in that area and bring them to that level. So that's my challenge to you guys, is to bring in some more kids that are at that level, that are not there, but they can be brought up with some leadership.
Yeah, I think at our Tempe Youth Talks event, a lot of people that usually wouldn't step up really did, and that was a great opportunity for them, and we hope to do that more often.
Yes, there you go.
Excellent. Sounds good. Councilman, anything else? All right. Wonderful. Thank you again for the presentation, and thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Oh, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to say one more thing. It's Tamsin, virtual. I just wanted to say, thank you so much. MIAC has been such an incredibly important part of my high school journey. Like, it's so sad to be leaving. Like, I'm so excited for college, but it has completely changed what I want to do with my life, with my career, like how I think about Tempe and how I think about my community. So I just wanted to say thank you to the city, and thank you to Adrian, and thank you for everyone who's been part of the journey, because it's been so important.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, just one quick thing. I'm Ratih. I would also like to just give a quick thank you for everything. I'm really glad that I still have another year left. Truly, MIAC has been one of the greatest opportunities I've had, and I can't wait to keep going next year, keep going over the summer. And yeah, I'm just a big thank you from all of us, not just the ones presenting, but also everyone else that worked with MIAC throughout the year. The opportunity to the city gives us truly means a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Wonderful. Thank you again for the presentation, and thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Oh, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to say one more thing. It's Tamsin, virtual. I just wanted to say, thank you so much. MIAC has been such an incredibly important part of my high school journey. Like, it's so sad to be leaving. Like, I'm so excited for college, but it has completely changed what I want to do with my life, with my career, like how I think about Tempe and how I think about my community. So I just wanted to say thank you to the city, and thank you to Adrian, and thank you for everyone who's been part of the journey, because it's been so important.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, just one quick thing. I'm Ratih. I would also like to just give a quick thank you for everything. I'm really glad that I still have another year left. Truly, MIAC has been one of the greatest opportunities I've had, and I can't wait to keep going next year, keep going over the summer. And yeah, I'm just a big thank you from all of us, not just the ones presenting, but also everyone else that worked with MIAC throughout the year. The opportunity to the city gives us truly means a lot to us, so thank you.
keep going next year, keep going over the summer. And yeah, I'm just a big thank you from all of us, not just the ones presenting, but also everyone else that worked with Mayak throughout the year. The opportunity to the city gives us truly means a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. That brings me to item 4B, Development Impact Fee Study. I see Lisette, and do you have Ben Griffin joining you virtually this evening?
Mr. Griffin will be joining us on virtually.
Okay, sounds good. Perfect.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. Lisette Camacho, Financial Services Director. And we are here to provide an update on development impact fees. This presentation is for information only. We are not looking for council direction. We wanted to provide an update to City Council on the draft land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and the proposed development impact fees. A couple of things to note with this presentation is that the overall development impact fees for, for Tempe will continue to be lower compared, one of the lowest compared to other cities. We are proposing to discontinue the collection of water and wastewater development impact fees. Reason for that is we have, over the years, improved our water and wastewater infrastructure, and we believe that we have sufficient capacity to do, to meet the, the demand of future development. And before I turn over the presentation to Mr. Griffin, I'd like to thank several departments for their help and input and putting together the draft report you're seeing in front of you, and that's Community Services, Police, Fire and Medical Rescue, Community Development, Public Works, and I'm probably missing one. Oh, yes, Transportation and Sustainability Department. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Griffin.
Thanks, Lisette. Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak with you about the status of the update to the impact fees. Let's see, we can go to the next slide. I want to start off with just a quick impact fee 101 type thing to bring everyone up to speed. That way, if you haven't done impact fees in a few years, you know, it's a quick refresher. And if you've never been part of, you know, an impact fee update, you know, it also brings you up to speed. Lisette touched on, you know, the land use assumptions, the infrastructure improvements plan. That's going to be the, you know, sort of the nuts and bolts of the impact fee study. We'll get into a little bit more detail of that. We'll look at a fee summary, and then as Lisette mentioned, how you compare to other cities in the valley. All right, next slide. Right, so development fees are one-time growth-related capital payments. So capital is the, the important part there because we can't use impact fees for operations, maintenance, repair, replacement, rehab, anything like that. You know, it's got to be a capital cost, and it has to be growth-related. It's not a tax, but you know, essentially, it's going to bind the city into, you know, constructing these growth-related improvements that your development is funding. Within the impact fee study, we have to prove three things. So there's need. So, you know, you, you need growth if you want impact fees. And then the other side of that is, you know, there needs to be the infrastructure need as well. And so we want to make sure that we're only including system-level improvements as opposed to project-level improvements. So example of that is, you know, on streets, this is an easy example, we would want to include, you know, widening roads, not the dedicated turn lanes required for a specific development to get, you know, in and out. So making sure that, again, it's just a system-level improvement. There needs to be benefit. So we look at benefit from two points of view. So there's the geographic benefits. We want to make sure that the fee payer geographically is, is close enough to receive a benefit from that infrastructure. And then we also want to make sure that you, as a city, spend the money within 10 years of receipt of that, that impact fee. And finally, we want to make sure that the fees are proportionate to demand. We do that a couple of ways, but really what we're looking at, you know, on the residential side is the occupancy factors. So as housing units increase in size, the occupancy rate increases. So the larger units should pay more than the smaller units. And then on the non-residential side, just looking at your different employment densities or trip generation rates by the different land uses. So, you know, for example, retail versus industrial versus office versus institutional. Next slide. Right, so in Arizona, there are three components to an impact fee study. The first, the land use assumptions or the LUA. We're looking at, you know, at least 10 years into the future. For this study, we're only looking at 10 years, but you can include, you know, more than 10 years. And essentially, it's just, you know, what's the existing development base and where do we think, you know, the city will grow over the next 10 years? The infrastructure improvements plan, that's the level of service analysis, that the costs, the projects, things like that. That's limited to 10 years. And the final component is the development fees themselves. Those must be updated every five years. You'll hear me talk about level of service. Essentially, this just means, you know, you, you can't exceed or you can't charge future development for more infrastructure than existing development receives. And then if you do increase the level of service, you must identify the non-development fee funding that you're going to use to fund that increased level of service. In that way, you're charging everyone the same. Essentially, we just want to make sure that we're never charging future development more than existing development receives. And then finally, you know, there are some specific limitations in Arizona on impact fees. Things like, you know, parks cannot exceed 30 acres unless there's a direct benefit to development. And then with public safety fees, so police and fire, but we can't include things like regional training facilities. All right, next slide. Right, fee methodologies. There are essentially three, and they look at points of time. So the, looking to the past, that's going to be cost recovery. So essentially, you've oversized something, there's excess capacity, and you want to have future development buy into that excess capacity or essentially pay their proportionate share of, of that cost. When we look at the present, that's the incremental expansion approach. So we just want to maintain an existing level of service. And so we can say, hey, you provide this many park amenities per person, it costs this much per park amenity, so we can base the fee on that. And finally, when we look to the future, that is a plan-based approach where, you know, we're saying, hey, this, this is identified in our CIP or our master plan. You know, this is the growth-related share. This is existing development share. So really, you know, taking a look at the future and making sure that we're only charging existing development, or sorry, future development for their proportionate share of those plan-based improvements. Next slide. We also have to look at credits. So the first credit, the site-specific credit, that's handled on the back end. So once you've adopted fees, if a developer comes in and says, hey, you know, I, I constructed, you know, a baseball field, or, you know, I added pedestrian improvements, then you would provide a credit against their impact fees for that, you know, capital improvement that they, that they constructed because we've included it in the impact fee. The next two, a debt service credit or a dedicated revenue credit, those we actually handle in the impact fee study because we know that you'll be getting those types of revenues into the future. So it's easier just to include a credit in the impact fee study to reduce the impact fee. That way, we're not charging future development once through the impact fee and once through those future revenue streams. All right, next slide. So impact fees take a long time to update. So our, our project initiation meeting was back in December. So in June, we're, you know, we're looking at this work session, we're, we're planning to advertise the land use assumptions and the IIP. And then, once you advertise, you, you can't hold a public hearing for 60 days. So the idea over, you know, in July and August would be to have stakeholder meetings. And that way, when September rolls around, you've, you've had your 60-day advertisement period. You know, we, we've already talked with stakeholders. If, if we need to make any changes, you know, we can make those during that time period. And so, you know, when we come back to you in September for the public hearing on land use assumptions and IIP, the idea is to have, you know, a finished product. And then we'll come back to you in November to potentially adopt the land use assumptions and the IIP. And so then you start the second half of the adoption process related to the development fees. You're going to see the proposed development fees tonight, and you will see the proposed development fees during the adoption related to the land use and IIP. We want to make sure that everyone knows that the development fees as soon as possible. We want to make it as transparent as possible. That way, you know, in December, in that development fee public hearing, and then during the potential adoption in January, the fees should not change, you know, very much at all from what you see tonight. And they, they definitely will not change based on what you adopt, the land use assumptions and IIP in November. Because there's, again, we want to make it as, as smooth as possible. And so assuming that you adopt the development fees in January, the fees would go into effect no sooner than 75 days after that. So, you know, sometime in April of 2025. All right, next slide. Right, so this is just a, a quick overview of the land use assumptions. We have taken MAG's most recent socioeconomic projections, and, you know, they're saying, you know, over the next 10 years, Tempe is projected to grow by about 29,000 people. That translates into about 16,000 housing units. And then employment growth is about 30,000 jobs, and based on employment density factors provided by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that translates into almost 16 million square feet of non-residential floor area related to those, those new jobs. All right, next slide. Right, so we'll start with the Fire Infrastructure Improvements Plan. We will have a citywide service area, which is, you know, how, how you currently assess them today. And we're looking at two components. So there is a plan-based fire facilities component, and there is an incremental fire apparatus component. And so with the fire facilities, we're looking at Fire Station 7, which exists today. So there's some outstanding debt related to that. And then Fire Station 8, which is planned. And essentially, what we're doing here is saying, look, i- if we'd like to build this, what is existing development share? What is future development share? And so the combined total of Fire Station 8 and Fire Station 7 is about $33 million because you only have 3 million left on Fire Station 7. And so based on the proportionate share and projected growth, future developments' share of that $33 million is about 12.1 million, and existing development share is just shy of 21 million. It's likely you're going to issue debt, and so the, the debt would be used to fund existing development share. And we have included credits for the, those future debt payments. For fire apparatus, we're using incremental methodology. And so it's just saying, hey, if, if this is how many we have today, based on 10 years' projected growth, we need about six additional units, and the, the cost related to those six units is about $5.5 million. All right, and then on the next slide, this just takes the, the cost per person for residential development or the cost per vehicle trip for non-residential development. And all we're doing is taking that, that total cost, multiplying it by the demand unit. So for the residential side, that's going to be persons per housing unit. And so you can see on the right side, an example calculation. For a unit that's, you know, 1,200 square feet, to calculate the fee, it's just $354.3 per person times 1.66 persons per housing unit. And so the proposed fee for a 1,200-square-foot unit would be $589. That is per housing unit. So if you have, you know, 100 housing units in, you know, multifamily complex, then, you know, it's a, it's $589 per unit times those 100 units. On the non-residential side, it's $47.61 per vehicle trip. We multiply that by the number of, you know, vehicle trips generated on average weekday for 1,000 square feet of floor area. And so for a commercial or retail development with, you know, 1,000 square feet, we would charge $581 per 1,000-square-foot increment. So any questions on fire fees or the calculation of the fees before we move on? All right, so next up, we have parks. So again, this is a citywide service area, just like your existing fees. We're looking at two components. So we're looking at park amenities and multi-use paths, both using the incremental methodology. And so this is just saying, hey, if, if we have, you know, a certain number of park amenities today, a certain, you know, certain number of miles of multi-use paths, we want to maintain that. And based on the weighted average of your existing park amenities and what it costs to build multi-use paths, the, the, the existing level of service supports an additional 547 park amenities, and that's about $35 million worth of amenities. And then 6.2 miles of multi-use paths at a cost of about 16.5 million. Then on the next slide, this just shows the proposed fees. And so we're, we're looking at an increase for the residential and the non-residential fees. And the next slide. Yep. So again, it's just, you know, cost per person times persons per housing unit gives the proposed fees. So a slight increase. And, you know, one thing to consider is, you know, even if your existing level of service stayed the same compared to your, you know, previous fee study, the construction costs increases that we're seeing means that your fees, in theory, should go up even if you maintain your level of service. And so, you know, this is something that we're seeing, you know, across Arizona, across the country. It's just construction costs are increasing. And so, you know, we've really been working with staff to make sure that, you know, we're, we're including what's important to the community and, you know, trying to limit those, you know, the increases to the impact fees. Right? So for police and other citywide service area, with these, we're looking at two components. So police facilities component, which is the incremental methodology, and then a police vehicles component. This is a new component. It was not included in your, your previous fee study. And so with these, you know, to maintain your existing level of service, you need about 26,000 square feet of police facilities at a cost of about $26 million. And then for police vehicles, you would need 41 additional police vehicles. So again, you can't use the fees to replace any existing vehicles. This would be meant to expand your existing fleet by 41 units or about $3.8 million in growth-related costs. Right? And as you can see, an increase compared to your existing fees, but keep in mind, we are including the police vehicles that were not included previously. Right? Right, next up, we have streets. So we have two service areas for streets. Broadway is the, the dividing line between the two. So there's a north service area, which is north of Broadway, a south service area, which is south of Broadway. And we're looking at four components. So we have street improvements and bike pedestrian improvements, which are both plan-based. And then we have bus pullouts and traffic signals, which are both incremental. The street improvements and the bus pullouts, those were included in your previous study. The bike pedestrian improvements and the traffic signals, those are new components. So for street improvements, we're looking at, you know, a total cost of about $19 million, but the growth share of that is about $14.2 million in, in the north service area. In the south, there's about $2.3 million worth of projects identified over the next five years. It's one project, and the, the growth-related cost of that project is about $720,000. For the bike pedestrian improvements, there's no split on these. It's just assessed citywide. And so you've got about $25 million worth of projects identified. You have about $22 million in grants and transit tax, so we back that out. And so the, the remainder of that, only 449,000 is growth-related. So, you know, you still have a slight funding gap there, but we just want to make it known that, you know, the impact fees aren't funding 100% of, you know, these projects, you know, just, you know, just covering their proportionate share of them. With bus pullouts, this just looks at your existing level of service and says, hey, we, you know, we've got this many. So based on projected growth, we need 18 additional bus pullouts over the next 10 years, and that's about $4.2 million in a growth-related cost. For traffic signals, again, just maintaining a level of service. So you need 15 additional traffic signals to maintain that level of service, and the cost related to that is almost $11 million. Right, and on the left side, you see the proposed fees for the north service area, so north of Broadway. On the right, you see the proposed fees for the south service area, so south of Broadway, both seeing a slight increase. both seeing a slight increase despite adding, you know, bike pedestrian improvements and traffic signals. So again, you know, really looking at the costs and trying to limit any sort of, you know, development fee increase, knowing that, you know, construction costs are increasing. Right? As of that said earlier, you know, we went back and forth on water and wastewater. And, you know, through a lot of discussions with staff, we decided, you know, it probably makes sense to discontinue collection of water and wastewater fees. You know, conservation measures in the city of Tempe have meant that, you know, you have available water capacity. And through that, you know, leveling off of water demand, you're also seeing sort of a leveling off in your sewer flows. And so, you know, based on that and, you know, limited capital improvements needed to serve future development, the proposed water and wastewater fees will be reduced to zero. And so one thing to keep in mind when, you know, we're looking at the fee comparison in a few slides is, you know, we're just going to look at the non-utility fees, because, you know, the proposed fees do not include the utility fees anymore. And so, you know, we need to keep in mind that depending on the meter size of that new development, you know, we should factor in, you know, about a $3,000 to, you know, almost $850,000 reduction, again, depending on the size of the meter. And so that's just one thing to consider, you know, when we look at those comparisons to other cities, because most of your neighbors, you know, still have water and sewer impact fees. Right, so the top, this just shows the summary for the north service area. So what we're looking at on the residential side is an increase of about $1,100 to about $1,800 per unit. And then you back out, you know, the reduction for the water and sewer fees. In the south, a very similar increase, about, you know, 1,200 to almost 1,900 increase for the residential. Right, and then next slide, this shows a comparison for multifamily units in the area. And so you can see, right here, we're showing two sizes for Tempe. So your smallest size threshold, essentially an 800-square-foot unit, and then the next size up about 1,200 square feet. And so you can see that you go from being, you know, if not the lowest, near the lowest in the area, to about mid-range. And then for commercial and retail, on the next slide, again, you're going from sort of the lowest fees to about mid-range. And then a similar discussion with office on the next slide, going from the low end to about mid-range. One thing to keep in mind is, you know, a lot of your neighbors are updating their fees currently, or they have just updated. And, you know, with a lot of the communities, you know, in the Phoenix area, you know, if you're the most recent one to update, you're jumping towards the top. And, you know, that's just not the case with Tempe. You know, we're really looking at those fees going from some of the lowest to, you know, sort of mid-range. And again, it's just, you know, a lot of discussions with staff to make sure that we're only including, you know, what growth really demands and, you know, really making sure that, you know, we're really only including, you know, what we think should be included and really watching those costs and refining those. And so just like to open it up to any sort of questions with any of this or discussion on the impact fees in advance of the actual public hearing in a couple of months.
Sounds good. Okay, let me go to Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It's very thorough. I'm excited to hear about the improvements in our streets. That's great news. And also the bike and pedestrians improvements and the safety with bus pullouts, that all those things save lives, so it's really important. And we do have the best transportation in the valley. I'm going to brag about that, and I love the water savings. So great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else further comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none. Lisette, anything else on your end, or?
That concludes our presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. That brings us to item 4C, Community Safety Update for the Tempe Police Department. Chief McCoy, Assistant Chief Sorensen, and Chief Reese.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Greg Reese, interim deputy city manager. And I am here to introduce the community safety update. Along with me is Assistant Chief Dane Sorensen and Chief McCoy. Give you a little bit of background on this community safety update before I turn it over to these gentlemen, and I also have one slide that I want to go over with you. The community safety update comes out of a quarterly meeting that we've had over the last year, myself and city manager in Chelsea with the command staff over at PD. We go over there quarterly, and they present for about two hours, the team does over there. And every time we walk away, just impressed with the work they are doing. So some time ago, we asked Chief McCoy to bring forward a team member or two and present some of this to all of you, because we know it's easy to criticize the work that men and women do at Tempe PD. But when you sit back and see what's coming out of their commitment and their efforts, it's quite impressive. So I couldn't be prouder of what's going to be presented to you today and how we are actually trending. We're trending in the right direction. It's a lot of work to do, but we're trending in the right direction, and the team is reacting and responding to your concerns every single day. Before we get going, or before I turn it over, I want to look back at a few things here. It's been a year. It's been a year since Chief McCoy has joined us, and it's been a year since our city manager has taken over and identified some strategies and priorities. One of those early on was community safety, one of her four pillars. And part of that, she brought forward the idea of changing the org chart and consolidating community health and human services, police and fire into an area on the org chart or into one area that she recognized as an area that collaborates day in and day out. But that didn't just happen overnight. I can tell you firsthand that we started having those discussions back during the pandemic. She was bouncing that off me. She's asking me, what do you think about this? Don't you think we should have a community health and human services? Don't you think these teams were? And of course, I was going along with her, yes, yes, yes. Don't you think that should be in the org chart? Yes, yes. Little did I know a year ago that I would be a part of that org chart. So I should be cautious when Rose is asking me what I think about something is what I learned out of that. So, no, it's been a year. And she went right to work. And another thing that she talked about, again, a lot of you heard about the RTCC/ROC six, eight months ago. That's another thing that we've been talking about, the need for an RTCC. But not just an RTCC. She had envisioned ROC, that eventually, over time, is going to have so many other embedded services. We're not only going to do the things that RTCCs do from a crime standpoint, but graffiti, parks, you could go on and on to the departments that will have an opportunity to come in and look at things in the city that they address and they see. On track, the ROC.
I told Councilmember Chin had a question.
No, sorry to interrupt. But other people are watching that may not know what RTCC and ROC are.
Well, then they haven't been paying attention, Councilmember Chin. RTCC, Real-Time Crime Center. We are doing an ROC, Real-Time Operations Center. It's up there on the slide there. And we are on track with that. We have set the date for August. We already, as is stated here or is checked off on the slide, we are checking off these boxes. The one thing that I want to report out before I turn it over to these two gentlemen is, last week, we went before the school boards, both on the same evening, and we presented to them. And we believe here, by the end of the month, we should have IGAs with all of the schools, Valley Metro. So we are on track, and we are moving forward to that August start date. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these two gentlemen, and I'm going to step back.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, Chief McCoy, Tempe PD. Before we begin the day, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the sacrifices that our officers make to keep our communities safe. Earlier today, I attended the funeral of fallen Scottsdale detective Ryan Sew. This year in Arizona, we've lost three officers in the line of duty, and their sacrifices are a reminder of the risks our officers face every day to ensure the safety of our city. So again, thank you for this opportunity to present our community safety update. Over the past year, the Tempe Police Department has dedicated, has been dedicated to addressing community concerns to ensure the safety of our neighborhoods. I'm pleased to report that our efforts have yielded significant results with a notable reduction in crime. It is important to highlight that our strategies are in alignment with the city's performance measures of feeling of safety in your neighborhood and police services satisfaction. As we see here, the community placed a high importance on police services. This is an area that we sought to improve by ensuring our officers had a more visible presence in our neighborhoods, in those neighborhoods, interacting with residents and business owners. It's incredibly important that we listen to the concerns of our community and that we're responsive to those issues. Police services and quality and safety of businesses and homes remain as the top priorities for our city. Our commitment to these areas will continue as we move forward into 2024. By focusing on these priorities, we aim to create a safer, more secure environment for all of our residents and visitors to Tempe. One of our key achievements is the reduction of crime from 2022 to 2023. This significant decrease can be attributed to our proactive strategies, which included increased officer presence in neighborhoods, active listening to community concerns, and our collaborative efforts with our residents and business owners. Our focused enforcement strategies have also played a vital role in curbing criminal activity. Assistant Chief Sorensen is going to discuss some of these strategies in more detail later in the presentation. However, it is evident that our approach is working, and working closely with our community with this targeted enforcement has proven to be an effective strategy in addressing and preventing crime. We have seen an overall positive trend with the decrease in violent crime. You will see that there was an increase in the number of homicides in 2022 to 2023. And it goes without saying, one homicide is way too many. However, it should be noted, in June of '23, we deployed our new approach and strategies, and we've seen the number of homicides significantly reduced. Year-to-date, as of June of 2024, we have had three homicides, which is a positive trend that we will continue to monitor. So overall, our comprehensive efforts are impacting violent crime and making a difference in ensuring public safety in our community. Property crime is also seeing a remarkable decline. This decrease can also be attributed to our proactive measures and collaborative approach. Our commitment to preventing property crimes remains steadfast. We realigned our property crime squad to the same chain of command with our drug and tactical response units. We know that many property crimes are fueled by the addiction to drugs. This realignment will allow those detectives to work proactively to address this issue. Moving forward, expect to see more targeted enforcement strategies focused on addressing property crime. I'm now going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Sorensen, who will be discussing the specific strategies that we've utilized. Chief Sorensen.
Thank you, Chief McCoy. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, city leadership, for having us today. To highlight what Chief McCoy just talked about with the reduction in crime we had from '22 to '23, I want to talk about some operational strategies that are kind of at the forefront of what we're doing as we are into '23, '24. This is not all the things that we are doing, but these are three major highlights that I'd like to touch on. First of all, I'd like to talk about proactive engagements, street racing, and photo enforcement. As far as proactive engagement, from '22 to '23, we had an uptick in officer-initiated activity of 7%. That bucks the national trend of less proactive engagement and enforcement from all police departments nationwide. It's something that everybody's been struggling with. We actually had 10,000 more calls for service last year than we did the year before, but we had less citizen-generated calls for service. Those calls for service actually came from officers making contacts in the community when they saw things that looked out of place or just making contacts, making sure people are safe. We're also starting a localized engagement with our community. Expect to see us at neighborhoods, parks, schools, on the roadways. And you not just see us, you have access to police officers, to sergeants, to lieutenants, leadership, to really come together and have an opportunity to have a voice in what we're doing to make a difference in the neighborhood. And lastly, as far as proactive engagement, we have citywide proactive engagement. And I'm going to talk about hotspots and crime suppression operations. When I talk about hotspots, I'm going to give an example that was recent, the last few weeks. We had a neighborhood complaint in South Tempe that came to us in many different ways. It came through the police department. It came through Tempe 311, council communicators. There had been a rise in activity in this neighborhood. Within that week, we had put our specialized action team, which is a neighborhood team that can address these concerns, into that neighborhood. It took about a week. They had made several arrests for drug dealing, and then a warrant was served. And there were three people that were arrested, and there were two gun charges and drug sales charges, and that house was fixed for the neighborhood. That's a quick turnaround for something that comes to, I know it comes to your desk, it comes to our desk, it comes to 911, all the above. And additionally, we have large crime suppression operations. I'm going to touch on one last year. We had a West Tempe violent crime operation. We'd seen an increase in violent crime at the beginning of the year on the west side of Tempe. We shifted our resources and our tactics and made it a point to address that area, and it made a huge difference in the violent crime on that side. And I'll speak to more operations as we move forward here. Street racing, I know that I've heard from almost everybody here on council and talking about street racing. So we did two operations last year and into this year. Sorry, this year. We did Operation Slowdown, which was targeted speed along the rural corridor, starting in North Tempe all the way to South Tempe. During that, we wrote 600 citations, and we had 700 warnings for speed. We had a total decline of 46% in traffic collisions on our central corridor that goes through the middle of Tempe. Operation Silent Night, strictly focused on street racing, which has also been at the forefront nationally and locally. During this operational period of March to May, we wrote, we had 271 racing charges. We arrested 277 people for street racing and other crimes. We towed 211 cars and seized 29 guns. That led us to Operation Street Sweep, which started last weekend. This is kind of a double down on our street racing operations, and we partnered with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, DPS, and many of the large agencies in the Valley to target street racing. First weekend was a success with similar numbers that we saw in the other one, but with some collaboration citywide, valleywide, to really target this trend. And then lastly, our photo enforcement program. We're on track to be operational in November of 2024. This is the red light cameras that we've been talking about. This really enhances Vision Zero, which is a citywide goal to have zero fatal collisions on our streets in Tempe. And it enhances our speed and our street racing enforcement. We can't be everywhere all the time, but these cameras can be. We have 14 intersections that are covered and four mobile units that can be moved to enhance our operations as we see fit. So we are on track to make a big difference in 2024, and excited to see what will come of that. And I'll turn it back over to Chief McCoy. And I'll turn it back over to Chief McCoy.
Thank you. So in conclusion, we would like to acknowledge the dedicated men and women of the Tempe Police Department, who are truly making an impact. I'm incredibly proud of their efforts. However, our work is not done. We're constantly looking to improve and find ways to make our city even safer, and this includes aggressively fighting crime and bringing on new technologies such as the Real-Time Operations Center. I would like to also reiterate our commitment to working with our neighbors and our business owners to address community safety. Together is how we'll make a difference. Again, I want to thank you all for your support, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have for us.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I know we hear a lot about, oh, police aren't doing this and police aren't doing that. And I'm a numbers person, and you have provided me with great numbers. So I just want to repeat a few of the things that you said and highlight them. Violent crime is down 13.73%. Property crime is down 18.54%. Burglary, down almost 20%. 46% less traffic collisions. That is amazing. That's a statistically significant number, and actually, all of these are. So I'm like totally impressed with this, and I'm glad that we're doing the presentations. People need to know that we're out there, you guys are out there, you're doing a great job. Every day, you risk your lives, and, but you go get out there and do it anyway, and I think that really speaks towards your character and the organization. Chief, I think you're doing a great job leading the organization, and we're seeing numbers. I love, I love numbers, so let's keep those going. I think that's important for the public to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. Street racing has been a thorn in my side for three years. I have three years of experience of listening to those because I live right on railroad on every, for sure, every weekend. The sound has gone down enormously because of your efforts, and I love that you put all the different community together, like got other offices from other places together to help, just like we used to do with DUI Task Force. I would recommend that we keep doing that on a regular basis to keep the traffic slowing down. And finally, last week, I was, I was on one of the frontage roads, and there was an elderly man walking from his car, and I was like, and I went by and I was like, I think I know that guy. So I called his wife, and I did know who he was, and then I swung back around because I was going to pick him up and take him home, but the police officers were there, and I pulled over and said, I need your help. You know, this person is walking, and it's over 100 degrees, and he's in his late 80s. And they got immediately on it, and he ended up safely at home. So I just want to thank you for your efforts, and I will keep telling those stories, and because I'm going to keep on watching this, and thank you so much for the 46% less traffic collisions. You are literally saving lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And as I mentioned, it's incredibly important that we listen to our community, and one other thing I heard loud and clear when I arrived was street racing, how big of a problem it was. So I'm pleased to see our focused efforts has really made an impact.
I bet that was one of the first conversations I had with you.
It was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Garland?
I just want to say, I love the proactive. It was in your slide, you've said it a couple times. I think that's really important for what you do, what we all do, to be proactive. So thank you so much for, I love all the data that you've been collecting. I think that really helps us tell our story, as the Vice Mayor was saying, that information is great. One note I had on here is, is it possible to get some of this crunched down into a page that we can share on our social media? Because we would like to brag. You guys are humbled sometimes too much, we need to start bragging for you. And so, speaking of bragging, I had a meeting earlier this week with TOA and with a couple of Tempe officers to talk about opioids and what's going on, and I will say that City of Tempe in the last five years has had 335 saves. Lives have been saved because our officers have been trained on how to use Narcan. 335 lives, that is a lot. So I just want to shout out to that. The South Tempe Neighborhood Meeting that you had, that was really important to those residents, and sitting in those meetings and watching them ask the questions, and city manager had so many people that were there to be able to answer questions in different areas that they were looking at, I thought that was super positive, and it showed, because the next time that we met, there weren't as many people in the room because they trusted you, and you guys had been reaching out to them in between. So I think that was really important. And I think a lot of people don't understand the work that you guys do in the sense that we are 191,000 people in the City of Tempe, and we go to 315,000 during the weekday when we have other people here coming into work and going to school. So, and that's a lot, and you guys have been able to handle and manage that, so I appreciate that. And I've said this before, that there's a difference between being safe, you know, locking your doors, making sure your windows are closed, and feeling safe. And the idea that we are increasing that feeling of being safe is really important, and I'm so glad you guys have done this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Keaton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation. Obviously, we're trending in the right direction. We made significant improvements over the last year as far as crime rates throughout the city, and the Councilmember Garland's two points that she made I want to touch on is any sort of communications that can be given to us as council members to put out there. I'm a big fan of one-shits and infographics, as colleagues know. It makes it easier for us to have those conversations with individuals, because you know how hard it is to change people's minds sometimes, right? But certainly, the, not only, again, to Councilmember Garland's point, not only do the facts, you know, speak for themselves, but the feeling of our residents is improving as well. So you guys are clearly doing very good work. I'm looking forward to the Real-Time Operations Center coming online in August. I think that will make a big improvement as well. Hopefully, we get a tour of that as soon as it's available. I'd love to see it, but you guys are doing great work, so thank you for that, and I know that the Mayor and my colleagues appreciate it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilman Raj?
I'm going to say one thing. Thank you. When you do the one-sheet, give it to our community people, like give it to our schools, give it to people who actually, you know, businesses, give it to the chamber, so everybody can spread that word. That's all, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Council for further comments or questions? Just to the point about data and numbers, just a really quick comment. I can clearly tell that violent crime and property crime are down, not just from what I personally witnessed, because I have seen it, but it's also the conversations that I'm having with residents and frankly, local business owners. When I first started here a little over four years ago, I heard so many complaints about whether it was the street racing, property crime issues, violent crime issues, and over the last year or so, I have clearly seen just anecdotally, a decrease in what I've seen personally, but also what I have seen on different, like Facebook message boards and Reddit threads and things of that nature that I do read, to see exactly what our residents are talking about and what their concerns might be. And clearly, the, from my own personal witness, but also from what people are saying, those numbers were down in all of those categories that I mentioned, but it's nice to actually see the data that corroborates the anecdotal evidence that I've already been witnessing. So once again, great job on the presentation and great job out there fighting crime and making this a safer community. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Yes, are you guys familiar with any communities that do, with the drag racing, do impound their car permanently?
Yes, I am familiar with communities that do that, yes.
Okay.
Their cars are forfeited when these crimes are committed.
Because to me, it's just like if somebody commits a crime with a gun, you know, they shouldn't have their gun anymore, and this is a 5,000-pound gun that they're driving around. So, I mean, I'd really like us to look at this. I brought this up before, but I'd really like us to look at it, Mr. City Attorney, to see if we can get some more teeth into this, this drag racing problem.
We will definitely look into forfeit laws.
Okay, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
And I just, oh, I was just going to say, again, thank you all for your support. It's definitely a team effort amongst the department and all of our other city departments to ensure safety for our cities. So again, I just want to say thank you for all the support, and again, it's been a really good partnership, and we're all moving in the same direction, so.
Wonderful. Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Reese, and thank you, Assistant Chief Sorenson. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to item 4D, Proposed Speed Limit Changes: Public Comment Summary. And let me check here, because I believe I did have one comment card for 4D to see if this person's in the virtual audience, and that person, Madam Clerk was Katie Buligetz?
I still do not see her.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, and now I see Kathy Hollow in front of me. So wonderful, good to see you.
Okay, good evening. Kathy Hollow, City Traffic Engineer, here to present the summary of public comments that we received on our proposed speed limit changes. So just quickly go through the timeline of what we've done so far. We started with commission and council, we had public, two public meetings, we had a public comment period, went back to commission, and now we're here tonight, asking council for action to proceed with the proposed speed limits. If we proceed, we have two public hearings and then 30 days till implementation. So just to review, we're proposing speed limit changes because we think speed should match the roadside cultures. Roadway functions can change over time, and we're trying to right-size the speeds to match what is happening in the area. This program addresses council priorities, performance measures 3.26 and 1.08, that's the 20-minute city and high severity crash reduction. And you've seen this, but just to review, there's four corridors that we're proposing changes on. Mill Avenue proposing changing, reducing the speed from 45 to 35 at the north city limits to match the speed limit as you approach Curry, and also reduce the 40 mile an hour speed limit to 35 from south of University to Broadway Road. On College Avenue, we're proposing reducing the 35 mile an hour speed limit to 30 from the north city limit to Curry Road. First Street, reducing the 35 to 30 from Ash to the West End, and then Southern, reducing the 45 to 40 from 48th Street to the railroad tracks to be consistent across the city. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the public outreach that we did. Before I do that, I just want to say that there was an overwhelming support for the program, and I'm just going to talk about this process that was followed. Thank you to our PIOs and to Neighborhood Services for reaching out and getting, getting the word out to everybody. So you can see, we had direct mailers, social media, emails, project webpage, and public meetings. The direct mailer was sent to residents within a half-mile of each corridor with information about the proposal and details on the meetings. We also sent email notifications to Tempe Forum, Neighborhood Contacts, Boards and Commissions, inviting them to the meeting and inviting them to provide comments. The project webpage was put up in early May. There were a number of visitors, 808 site visits, some returned. It peaked about the time of the public meetings on May 15th, and then still had some people visiting the site after that. The public meetings, as I said, were held on May 15. There was a virtual meeting at noon, and there were 18 attendees. There's an in-person meeting at 6:00 PM at the library, and there were 22 attendees. Let's see, the responses, we received 112 responses, of which 83 provided addresses, and this map shows, like where the responses were from, kind of shows that a lot of people across the city responding, not just one location. And finally, the question that we asked was, do you support the proposed speed limit changes? And we had 75% of the people say yes, 22 say no, and three were not sure. So we feel the results indicate a clear majority in support of the proposal. A number of residents also provided written comments, which I believe were in your packet. Our next steps, if council provides direction to move forward with the changes, there'll be two public hearings, tentatively scheduled for August 26th and September 19th, and then 30 days after the second hearing, the changes can be implemented. So with that, any comments, questions?
Thank you, Kathy. I'm totally good with this, but anyone else?
Good.
Everybody good?
We're good.
Councilmember Chin?
Do you want to comment first?
Um, I don't, well, I already, I only had one comment card, who's not here, so.
No, thank you, Kathy. I just wanted to point out, as we've been reading about the proposed changes, what's very clear to me, and what I'd like to point out, forgive me if it's obvious, I think it's important to publicly state it. One of the principal objectives of this move is, there is an objective. It's intentional. It's not simply just to change some numbers. One, you mentioned right sizing. We talked about Vision Zero. The chief just talked about Vision Zero in their presentation. This is the engineering approach to Vision Zero also. Vision Zero has several components, engineering, enforcement, and education. My interpretation, it may not be exact. But that's looking at our roads to see what makes sense, and historically, the function and the use of certain roads, like Mill over the bridge, there are two different speed limits within several hundred feet, and it makes no sense, and it's not even fair to the driver to suddenly change it on them. So what we're looking at is consistency and safety with an end goal of Vision Zero. And for me, it became very obvious as I was reading through the presentations that this is the engineering approach and contribution to that overall effort. So I just wanted to clarify that or point that out to people who may have questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Appreciate it. Anyone else for further comments or questions? All right. Yes, Councilmember Garland, yes?
I liked the presentation, but I also thought you did a great job on the news yesterday. Well, because it was a very concise, it was a great concise description of what we're doing, like what you said here with a little bit more information, but I thought it was a great job. I fully support it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Wonderful. All right, sounds good. Thank you so much, Kathy. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have item 4E, Accessory Dwelling Units Code Proposal Update, and I had a couple of cards that I'm going to circle back with to see if those folks were in the virtual audience this evening. Madam Clerk, is Ann Till available?
I do not see Ann, but I do see Sean, so I can move him up.
Okay, then we will go to Mr. Swisher then.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Great. My name is Sean Swisher. I am a resident of Tempe in the Daly Park neighborhood. Mayor and Council, I'm happy to speak with you tonight in support of the accessory dwelling unit program that you all are exploring. First, as the Chair of the Sustainability and Resilience Commission, earlier today, we issued a letter stating our commission's support for this policy, especially in the way that the city is looking to approach it. There are two ways that we think this benefits the city from a sustainability perspective. The first is the addition of more diverse and appropriately scaled density that can make our city a more walkable and livable community. That missing middle housing, where there are so many people that neither want to live in an apartment building or a single-family house, this ADU option gives people more flexibility, more options when they go to seek out their housing. As well as creating slightly more density in these communities, you also get that benefit of creating more options for walkable communities. The other is building upon the IGCC. That has been adopted as a voluntary code, and thank you again to the council for making that happen. As we seek to move into a mandatory code, the ADU program could represent actually a great opportunity to vet out different aspects of the IGCC that could be implemented at the residential level, and this could be done through a pre-approved plan program. Those pre-approved plans, not necessarily all of them, but some of them could incorporate aspects of the IGCC, and not only would that pre-approved plan program increase access to folks that are looking to build an ADU, to work with an architect that otherwise they may never get the chance to, it also lowers the cost, and it also increases accessibility to sustainable design for our residents. And so for these reasons and many more, including increased energy efficiency, lower water use, et cetera, ADUs could be a really great asset in our sustainability portfolio for the city. So thank you for your time, thank you for listening to my words tonight, and I hope that we will keep pushing this ADU policy forward. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, that was the only other card that we have this evening, so I guess we will move forward with the presentation on item 4E. And I see Jeff Tamilevich and Ryan Levate coming forward. Jeff Graytie, by the way.
Thank you. I guess ADUs bring out the best in.
Thank you. I guess ADUs bring out the best in. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Jeff Tamilevich. I'm the Community Development Director. With me tonight is Ryan Levate, Deputy Director in Community Development, who will be presenting on accessory dwelling units. I also want to give recognition to the team that's been working on this for a very long time. Ambika Adikari, Lucas Jensen, who's actually with us tonight and will be here for questions, Shawna Warner and Brenda Clark. So thank you to all of you. Our presentation today is actually much different than we anticipated it to be. We, you know, a few weeks ago, we didn't know that House Bill 2720 regarding accessory dwelling units was going to be passed by the House and then signed by the governor last month. Today, Tempe is no longer in the driver's seat. We don't have the abilities that we had. Accessory dwelling units are now required by the statewide. And I'm going to pass it over to Ryan, who's going to talk a little bit about that. He's going to talk about staff's outreach efforts, what we should expect with the staff mandates, and also where do we go from here? How do we move forward?
Thank you, Jeff. This ADU update closely aligns the city council priorities, Performance Measures 2.15. Feeling invited to participate in our city decision-making process. Performance Measure 3.28, ending homelessness. Performance Measure 3.3, age-friendly community designation. And Performance Measure 4.09, achieving a housing inventory ratio. So the topics we'll go over is a overview of our ADU code update, Tempe's current regulations, summer results from our public outreach. The House Bill 2720 that Jeff was referring to will go over those details, and then next steps timelines on this process. The overview of the proposed text amendment. We did a citywide outreach to look at updating the ADU section of our zoning development code, specifically as it applied to single-family residential zone properties. We were aware that there was some draft Arizona state legislation in the works, House Bill 2720, which now requires Tempe to adopt regulation for ADUs by January 1 of 2025. ADUs are expected to expand affordable housing options, provide extra income and opportunities for homeowners, and as well facilitate multi-generational living. So what is an ADU, and what are Tempe's regulations? You may see ADUs in several different fashions. The most typical is a detached accessory dwelling unit that's on the same lot for a rentable, separate dwelling unit next to the standalone, single-family home. It may be attached to that single-family home in several different ways, either above a garage unit, a basement, even a second-story addition, or interior divided space that can make up an accessory dwelling unit. But it's independently rented, separate from the main residence. Current Tempe regulations adopted back in 2019 allowed properties that were zoned multifamily residential that have an existing single-family use were also allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit. Very few properties, you can see in this image here, there was some neighborhoods like in Maple Ash, Wilson Arts and Garden, and East Rio neighborhoods that had this single-family use with multifamily zoning. And we had about eight or 10 properties that took advantage of it during that time. The standards today are a maximum 100 square feet of a livable area. You can have one ADU allowed per lot on a single-family property site, and no additional vehicle parking was required. There was also a maximum of no more than two bedrooms for the unit. We had conducted two parts of our public outreach process. One earlier in October 2023, and then we came back for you all for a second direction on a process that ended and concluded in May. That first round of process, we had a Tempe Public Library meeting that was well-attended, Zoom meetings, neighbor advisory commission, and then we went to a council work study for further direction. Second round of the process, a little bit more robust, longer time commitment. We've actually had three physical public meetings, one in central Tempe, north Tempe, and as well in south Tempe, that were well-attended. We did another survey, and more specific items related to some proposed draft regulations that we wanted the public to weigh in on. We got an overwhelming response of 619 responses, that tripled the amount of our responses from the previous survey, as well as doing some online survey. The, we also went out to the Development Review Commission for presentation discussion, Transportation Commission, Historic Preservation, Sustainability Resilience Commission, Broadmoor Neighborhood, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, and all had an opportunity and chance to weigh in on the subject. Here is the results of our survey that we had conducted. So just going over quickly some of these questions that we asked, if they would like to see ADU eligible expand to single-family zoned areas in our existing single-family residents. Still had a majority in support of seeing that expansion. The numbers went down a little bit, but we still see strong support in seeing expansion of ADUs into single-family zoned areas. House Bill 2720 now would allow at least two accessory dwelling units per lot, one attached and one detached. The ADU expansion, those who said yes thought this would help support the housing supply and provide affordable housing. It'll also help support multi-generational living and provide extra source of incomes. Those who said no and didn't want to see the expansion had concerns for increased traffic, parking issues, concerns for impact on the neighborhood's character and quality of life, and were concerned about investor influence or the lack of affordability, especially in short-term rentals. Those who were not sure had mixed themes on both of those topics above. Some of the other questions that we asked respondents, would you like to prohibit independent, short-term rentals, less than 30 days in ADUs? An overwhelming response of yes, they wanted to restrict short-term rentals. But as we know now, House Bill 2720 now prohibits us from restricting short-term rentals in ADUs. So those who said yes, that they were supportive of restricting short-term rentals because they were concerned that this would reduce the affordability of those long-term rental housing options and potentially increase congestion, traffic, and create the other nuisances that have been described in current short-term rental usage. Those who said no and wanted to see short-term rentals thought this still could provide extra income opportunity for property owners, and property should have a right to operate a short-term rental. Those not sure just thought of looking at needs for proper regulations. For example, the most common item that was brought up was property owners should reside on-site for the property. Another question we asked in trying to address questions and concerns earlier on, we heard about developer-driven process or requested concerns that there was just going to be a lot of investments just for profit and not for homeownership or for long-term rentals that residents in Tempe could afford. So we asked the question, are you in favor of requiring a three-year ownership requirement for the process? So a way to kind of address, you know, developer-driven acquisition of properties and just buying of three lots and then making six units out of rentals. A majority of the requests were supportive of seeing a three-year ownership requirement, but now that we have House Bill 2720, we no longer have that ability to regulate the ownership terms of the property owner. So really nothing we can do to address these concerns, but again, a lot of them focused on trying to address the investor-driven concerns related to the program. ADU square footage, our current maximum ADU allowance is 800 square feet. We're looking to expand that up to 1,000 square feet. And a majority of respondents were supportive of seeing the higher square footage amount in ADUs in most communities, as well as Phoenix, to have that provision about up to 1,000 square feet, which is very similar with the, what the state mandate also allows. Parking requirements was probably the hottest topic of discussion related to ADUs. There were strong proponents that wanted to see parking regulations, and there are strong proponents that thought they were supportive of ADUs, also did not want to see the city getting into regulating parking. We kind of took a look at a hybrid approach at identifying the total number of bedrooms on-site with the residents in the ADUs. And this would determine whether or not, if you had five or less bedrooms, that you would still only require two parking spaces. And if you had six or more bedrooms, like we do for building additions today, it would trigger a third parking space. We now know that House Bill 2720 has taken our ability to regulate parking for ADUs, but there was overall support to see proposed regulations on ADUs. But there also was some concern that this might be an encumbrance to wanting to provide flexibility in the ADU parking requirements. It also, also those who said no thought that, you know, this encourages more of a walkable city and helps support our alternative transportation modes. Development standards. Currently, we're proposing no changes to the standards for maximum height setbacks and lot coverage. As most of us know, based on your zoning district, every district has a different requirement for the height, size, lot coverage allowances. So we got a little bit mixed review on this question because not many people knew what are my standards for their property and those varied requirements. So majority had a support for it, but at the same time, they're concerned maybe that if we didn't put additional regulations in place, that ADUs might be a problem, that might need to have additional requirements to be in line with the character of the neighborhood. Those that didn't want to see changes basically had some mixed response and wanted to have more restrictive standards in the ADU provisions, like addressing character in the area. Guest quarters was a topic also related to ADUs. The difference between guest quarters is it can't be rented versus an ADU is a rentable unit. So under the proposed Codex, we talked about removing the guest quarters provisions from the code and just leaving them in the ADU zoned area where they originally arrived from. We did get an interesting response that the majority were not in favor of removing guest quarters provisions. Either people didn't understand what was being proposed or were not sure about removing it altogether. But I think the better way we look at describing this is is we're looking at still maintaining the use of guest quarters, which is having the provisions in the accessory dwelling unit regulations, so that's combined. You're not looking at having one versus the other. It would be, you can use your site either as a guest quarter or as the ADU provisions and combine them together. So those were still supportive of seeing guest quarters, which supports multi-generational living and increased flexibility of expanding their home. Those that didn't want to see it, again, were concerned with traffic and changes in the characteristics of the neighborhood, investor influence, and property value increases. So can HOAs regulate the use of design of ADUs? This is the most common question that we've received from a lot of the neighborhoods and inputs, and the answer is yes. If you have an HOA that has CCNRs, they can regulate the use of the property to either not allow ADUs or regulate how many or the design of an ADU. So it's important for property owners to know, what does your homeowner association allow? What are they going to allow, and what are those limits? It is incumbent on the property owner to understand those rules and regulations and adhere to them. So the city intends to provide some information on our website about those potential factors for HOAs. Provide website materials and pamphlet information to help keep residents more informed about, if they live in an HOA, please check your CCNRs and local regulations because they can be more restrictive than the city is. All right, let's get into those specific state legislative requirements, House Bill 2720, which was passed and signed by the governor on May 21st. House Bill now changes some of our initial adoption directions, requires municipalities of 75,000 or more to adopt regulations where single-family use is allowed no later than January 1 of 2025. And now it allows at least one attached and one detached ADU as a permissible use in single-family properties. It also allows a minimum of one additional ADU on a one-acre or more site with identifying at least one restricted affordable unit. Now, the House Bill defines restricted affordable unit as a dwelling that is either be restricted or has a development agreement with the city that shall be rented to households earning up to 80% AMI. Maximum size of the ADUs are 75% of the gross floor area or no more than 1,000 square feet. So I have an example down below here that's showing that standard single-family property could have one attached ADU and one detached by right, and then a third ADU that for lots of one acre or more with identifying a restricted affordable unit. It doesn't have to, the restricted affordable unit doesn't have to be that third unit. It can be one of the other two as well. And so we looked also into providing a map that shows where single-family property lots, one acre or larger, exist within the city. Total calculation of 233 parcels. You see some subdivisions up in the northern area of Tempe that have one acre or more lots, some scattered parcels, just like remnant parcels that really are small, of single one-off lots. But most of your one acre or more sites are located in the south Tempe area, near Warner and McClintock, and the Tally Ho Farms area, Kaia Dicabios, and some of those properties, Circle G Ranches, has some properties of one acre or more size. But they're also subject to whether or not the HOA regulations would allow the ADU provisions. Other House Bill requirements. Municipality may not do the following. We cannot prohibit the use of single-family or an ADU from being leased as a long-term rentals. Means that we cannot require onsite residency for having an ADU. We cannot require familial status or pre-existing relationships between the occupants of the single-family in ADU. We cannot require the lot to have additional parking for ADUs, which is what the city was looking at and evaluating, and we're no longer pursuing. We cannot require ADU to match the exterior design, roof pitch, materials of the single-family dwelling. And we have restrictions on not providing more restrictive regulations than what the single-family dwelling already has with regard to height, setbacks, lot size, coverage, or building frontage. And actually, the ADUs are given an additional relief of set, rear and side yard setbacks for no more than five feet. So if your property setback rear is 15 feet today, the ADUs are allowed to be five feet from that rear property lot. We cannot require improvements to public streets as a condition to allow ADU, except for reasonable repairs related to construction. And we can't require any additional restrictive covenants concerning an ADU. One additional provision that was added on late in the process, which is interesting related to short-term rentals, did allow the cities to be able to regulate short-term rentals if, to require the owner of the short-term rental to reside on the property if the property contains an ADU was constructed on or after the effective date of this amendment. That means that if someone was proposing to use their proposed ADU as a short-term rental to register, the city could require that owner to reside on-site as an obligation to use the ADU for short-term rentals. So this may potentially discourage use of ADUs as short-term rentals if we were to adopt this regulation. So based on those state ADU mandates and our recommendations from community development, we're recommending further exploration into requirements for owner occupancy of short-term rentals ADUs. We have been meeting with our sales, tax, and license staff on how that could be set up. We're also recommending combining the guest quarter provisions into the proposed ADU regulations and look to proceed with drafting an ordinance by the fall of this year. Other continued items that we'll need upon adoption of the process. We want to continue evaluating the preferred opportunities for streamlining the process and reducing some of the cost burdens associated with applying for an ADU. If you recall, earlier in the year, we did a white paper on studying some processes that allowed applicants to kind of reduce some of the cost barriers associated with having like pre-approved plans or plans that were ready to issue permits by certain cities. We could develop an ADU library with those pre-approved plans and enhance the design sustainability elements of those plans, just like as what was recommended from our Sustainability Commission, something that we can continue exploring and evaluating. So with that, we look to hopefully release a proposed draft by August that's here for public review based on your council work study direction. And then we can complete the hearing process in August and late September, possibly into October for adoption of this process in order to meet the mandate deadline of January 1st. Any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation, Councilwoman Garland and Councilwoman Keating.
The first thing I want to say is HB 2070.
The first thing I want to say is HB 2070 is frustrating because it takes away our local control. And things like this, it's hard because we know our city better and we know our residents better than they do at the Capitol. And so this, this frustrates me, but besides that, I appreciate and I would like to see in the regulation that, that we are putting together in the, in the ordinance, it does say it has to be owner occupied. I think that that's a really important part of this and I'm glad that you brought that up already. My other note that I had on here is about fast tracking, the process, and I think you kind of mentioned that also. And the other note I had was the thing I mentioned to you from National League of Cities where they, some cities had already pre-approved plans that made it easier for them to be able to, to do this process. The other thing you, you kind of mentioned on here also, one of our residents had sent this in and I thought this was really good, to put something in the packet that also says, just again, making sure that the residents, the people that are applying know that you have to check, they have to check. It's their responsibility to check with their HOAs to make sure that what's, what it said in their CCNRs. But I think your response to this was that it will be in the packet for the application and then it'll be under the FAQs also, so that we're going to make sure that people know that they can go to their HOAs. Okay, last thing then. That's not it. If, if there's a neighborhood association that does not have something like this written in their HOAs right now in their CCNRs, or if there's an NA who now want, a neighborhood association that now wants to be an HOA because they want to keep ADUs from being in there, if they make those changes, will they be grandfathered into this? Or if they start to make those changes now or try to rewrite their CCNRs, will that cause a problem?
It'll be contingent upon the time they have to adopt those type of regulations if, if it's for their private CCNRs. So I'll give you the example, if, if we adopt our, our code by, and it goes into effect by October, if they haven't changed their CCNRs, then those properties are allowed to have accessory dwellings until possibly the, the association then changes their regulation. So it, it could prevent future additions for ADUs.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because I, I know that I, that might be on the top of somebody's mind right now is to go and check and see what their CCNRs. I sat in a meeting with our neighborhood association and they checked already and ours are covered, but, but I just think it's really important that everybody knows that they can go check on that information.
Yeah, we heard from some, some HOAs that there is some common language in there about not allowing additional dwellings. But yeah, it's incumbent upon HOAs to identify and evaluate to see if they need to update their, their association CCNRs.
Okay, well, I appreciate the presentation, even though I know you guys had to change it with what happened at Capitol, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very helpful. I think the public feedback, you guys did a lot of robust public feedback, it was three or four sessions. I think they, the results kind of lined up with pretty much what you'd expect as far as, yeah, this is a interesting policy, but we want to make sure there's some reasonable controls on it. And I do understand that HB 2720 has taken away some of those controls, but I, I do think that's kind of, it just, it made sense from the other results that I saw. I just want to make sure I'm under, I, I agree with Councilmember Garland in that if someone wants to use an ADU for short-term rentals, then they have to reside there. That, that has to be included. I think that makes a lot of sense to prevent this, some of the situations that we've seen in the years past. It has gotten better, but we certainly don't want to go backwards in the progress we've made there. So to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so a, a house, a, a property could have two ADUs from, from the HB 2720 and obviously they'll then have to be included in Tempe's ordinance, right? Well, we can't infringe it. They could have two ADUs, one attached, one detached, just from the word go. And then if their property is big enough, an acre plus, they could have a third ADU as long as it fell into the affordable category. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. And that's, that's at least, that's the minimum. Cities can allow more ADUs if they want to.
I see, okay. One, one question is about HOA regulations. So Councilmember Garland kind of talked about it a little bit. Wouldn't HOA then in theory be able to regulate these things into being impossible?
They could outright restrict them. They do, they do have the right.
They could just say no.
As an HOA, yes.
Okay.
Has to be established within their CCNRs, you know, obviously prior to this ordinance going into place.
Prior to the ordinance going into place. So, so to Councilmember Garland's point then, an HOA would have to do this before we adopt an ordinance, otherwise they're out of luck? Or would they be able to then, could, could they edit them next year and say, no, no more ADUs?
They, over time, they could.
Yeah, based on individual case. So if somebody came in and they proposed an ADU within that HOA and the, and that's, those CCNRs had not been established at that time, then they could move forward with that application. Until this, until the HOA actually gets those CCNRs established, then, you know, then the HOA does not over, overrule the city.
And for the folks at home, the city has no authority over HOAs. We can't tell them what to do with their association, correct?
Correct.
So that you think, is there a fear that this could lead to areas that aren't under an HOA, which are typically working class compared to areas that are under HOA, which tend to be a little bit wealthier, kind of divide in where the ADUs are in the city?
I think that's where we expect to see the AD, ADUs proposed the most.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ryan. A couple of questions, but first a clarification following Councilmember Keating's question. So, just so I understand, the HOA rules supersede the state rules, but the city rules do not supersede the state rules?
That is correct.
So the HOA is the most powerful in this case?
They are the leaders, yes.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Language is clearly crafted. Municipalities shall not do the following.
Yep. My question relates to slide 36, if you'll go back to that. And it's really just a little bit of feedback. One, I agree with Councilmembers Garland and Keating on the, once we move forward, I would like to see that additional owners must reside on property if it's a short-term rental. So 36.
36.
There. Those two look like they should be definitely used in, the two bullets go together. And, and the top, future items after adoption, my concern with after adoption, maybe closely followed after adoption, because you can't wait. Once it's adopted, if you don't have preferences or ideas for people, you lose a little bit of control, what control we have left, right? So what I would urge you to do is perhaps in line with everything else you have to do on this one, review the process here about streamlining with pre-approved plans, that maybe we've been able to vet out some pre-approved, there could be cost savings for residents and homeowners in that effect, but also it gives us some parameters and guidance that we can share. And one of the, I think Commissioner Swisher mentioned, the voluntary IGCC, maybe building in some of those initiatives included, but just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chin, you're exactly right. The objective was to still work on this simultaneously while we're drafting the ordinance and still work on those preferred streamlining processes and develop, develop a plan that then will allow us to go out and issue like an RFP that had, we're looking for pre-approved plans that has these type of sustainability elements, then we can be able to market that and go through an approval process.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you. First off, I want to say I agree with my colleagues when it comes to the short-term rental and, and the owners residing. And my next question, I guess, might be more for Shawna, Shawna Warner. Are we going to educate our, our HOAs on this? Because some of our HOAs don't have this information, because I know my HOA does not, what they can and cannot do. So is there any kind of education that we can give HOAs? If they have the power and they don't, some of them really don't know it. So I just want to know, how much are we going to educate our HOAs on this? She's right there. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmember Shawna Warner, Neighborhood Services Manager. So for HOAs, we can't offer them any kind of legal advice, but what we do, do is educate them on what the city's policies are and certainly have resources for them. So we actually offer HOA trainings and we contract with a HOA legal firm that actually provides classes. So I know that they are going to be providing some. They just held a session on impacts of the current legislation. And so it's important for the HOAs in Tempe to be registered with our office and then we can share those resources and information with them. But we will be moving forward with those types of trainings for them.
Thank you. I'll find out if my HOA is registered with the team.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you. That was what I need from you. And I just want to make a comment that Wednesday, we met with the governor directly and ADA's, this came up, this conversation came up about what was signed, what was done. And she did say that even though she signed it, that she would still continue to look into it, like this is not the end all of, end all of this. So I just wanted my counsel to know that we did bring this, we addressed this with her directly and this is one of the conversations that came out of it. So I don't think this is the end. I think it had a lot to do with the budget and what was given. It was a give and take. And I think, you know, she realizes that sometimes the city take, they take a lot from us and don't give us as much as we need back. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else for the comments? I, I was just going to say just two quick things. I, I concur with the suggestion about having the, if you're operating an STR or short-term rental to have the owner living onsite, I do think that's a good provision to include in any kind of final document. And also the notion, I, to Councilmember Chin's point about trying to find ways to have some kind of pre-approved models that we would allow for some streamlining that might help to reduce the cost or to sort of help people kind of in a sense narrow down their options about what they might like onsite when it comes to having an ADU. But I also love the notion of trying to find ways to incorporate the, the green code and heck, having maybe one or two prototypes for that as well, for people who are looking for this to be an option, that's not only maybe expanding affordability or supply, but also incorporating some of the green code principles that the council really is very much behind, along with myself. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings me to, Kim, you hung in with us. I appreciate it. So item number 4F, mitigation of stink net. Alex, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Alex Jovanovic, Deputy Community Services Director, Park Services. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today to present on the mitigation of stink net, which was a requested presentation by community members as well as council.
You can replay Kim Gaffney Loz's three minutes and... You know, while you're doing that, maybe we could do something else really quickly here. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll come back to it. Let me just see really quickly here. Item number five is called to the audience. The City Council welcomes public time, commented at this time for the Committee of the Whole Items on this work study session agenda. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Are there any cards, Madam Clerk, for item number five?
I have not received any more cards.
Okay, sounds good. Then let me go here to item number six, Committee of the Whole. Items ready for City Council Direction or Status Update, Human Services and Community Safety Council Committee Update, any update here? Okay, item 682, Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee Update, any update there? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just have a quick update. We had a great presentation from our, from our Solid Waste folks the other, the other day, and I think it would be good for, they're doing a lot for sustainability and, and a lot of new issues for sustainability. So I would like that to go into an entire meeting with all of council, have them do a presentation there. Thank you.
To the Vice Mayor's point, it sounds like we might actually have presentations on all the council committees this evening. So with that said, let's do this then. We will, now that we found the stink net presentation, we'll go back and we'll do that and then we will come back to item six, because we will have report outs on all three committees.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, perfect. Thank you so much for being, and, thank you.
Not all three? No, all three, you need to.
All right, two out of three. Not bad. 66 and two thirds percent. Alex, go for it.
Thank you. So I'd like to frame today's presentation around City Council's Street Chief Priority, Quality of Life, specifically two performance measures, one on the satisfaction of our spaces and places within community services and the other one based on satisfaction of right-of-way landscape maintenance. The other thing I'd like you to keep in mind throughout the presentation is this is a collaborative effort, both the presentation, but more importantly, all the work behind the scenes on the mitigation of the spread of stink net with multiple departments across the city. Today has been, obviously there are a lot of presentations, so I don't want to lose, lose you during the presentation. So with that, I would like to start with the end in mind. And if you take away anything from the presentation, take away three things. One being that stink net does have impacts to the community. Two, within all the managed spaces by the city, within the city, the vast majority of that is being managed well, with the exception of we have some troubled areas, as Kim Gaffney Loz had mentioned, with our preserves and open spaces, that's going to take some persistence. And then the last point would be, the most important one is the vast majority of the land in the city is actually not managed by the city. So we need strong collaboration and partnership with all our private property owners. So the purpose of the presentation is to bring a brief history, kind of background of stink net, why stink net is a problem, what we're currently doing, and then additional strategies. So stink net, referenced as officially, scientific name is Oncocyphum pilluferum or pillufer, depending on language choice, commonly called globe camomile in addition to stink net, not to be confused with common camomile. So globe camomile, stink net should not be consumed. It is a non-native invasive, invasive plant here in the United States. It was first introduced approximately in the early eighties in California and then in Arizona and the Phoenix area in 1997. It is a distinctive plant or weed, both in its appearance with carrot top-like leaves, but most importantly, it's brightly yellow-colored globe-shaped flower heads, which contain anywhere from 200 to 300 seeds per flower head, and those seeds have a, up to a five-year viability. It is a strongly odor'd weed. It, sometimes people consider it to smell like turpentine or sometimes nail polish remover. In addition to that, it, and this is probably the most impactful, it grows very densely and outcompetes native vegetation because of that dense growth. It's a winter annual, so it grows from, as Kim mentioned, basically from November through June, and as Kim also mentioned, has up to three germination periods, which that part is, it does make it difficult to manage because of the three germination periods. And as she also mentioned, it grows just about anywhere. She's found it all over the place. We find it in cracks in the sidewalk, parking lots, open areas, obviously within the park system.
I think that we should maybe put Kim on staff. Thank you.
And then it's also, no, we'd love to have her. She is on our Desert Conservation Commission.
Yes, she is.
And it's also spread by people, animals, wind and water as well. So why is it impactful? How's it impacting our community? So as mentioned, it grows densely and fairly rapidly. It displaces, displaces native vegetation, which is a problem. As it grows, as it matures, it dries out and because it grows so densely, it became, becomes a risk of fire or poses fire risk. And then in addition to the pungent smell, it's also an allergenic, so both to skin and your breathing. So stink net's here. It's our responsibility to prevent it as much as possible and then mitigate the spread of it. So we're using mapped areas, which Kim has assisted us with in the past. Actually, she was largely behind that mapping effort. In addition to mapping effort, that mapping effort helps us identify also additional new growth areas. Within our parks, paths and right-of-ways, we're using an integrated approach to remove and control stink net, using multiple control methods. And one of those includes also, you would consider it like a cultural practice, so essentially revegetating and/or re-landscaping areas. So I know some of that's been done in some of the right-of-way areas. If you took like Mill Avenue and Rio Salado area, which looks great by the way. So some of that has helped. So some of that has helped, which we've currently done, and then engage the community. So working with Desert Conservation Commission on a workday out in the preserves to manually remove or hand-remove stink net. Our park rangers have collaborated with the Central Arizona Conservation Alliance to have a workday to remove stink net in Indian Valley and Wash. And then, while not directly tied to stink net, Tempe Leadership and Tempe Cares had a project out of Tempe W Cemetery to remove some weeds, debris, those types of things, and then spread some rock, which was probably the most impactful part, because that rock spreading helps deter hopefully revegetating, so to speak, but not vegetation, just with landscape materials. Our Communications and Marketing and Neighborhood Services have worked with several departments to make sure we update city website information, provide information in Tempe Today issues and the water bill, and then most recently, worked with our park rangers on a social media post on how to properly remove stink net. So our integrated approach includes multiple control methods, as mentioned earlier. So the three main ones are basically manual removal, so hand removal, herbicide use, and then cultural practices. For the hand removal or manual removal, it's best to remove it when it's young, when it's immature, when it doesn't have seeds on it. If you do remove it when it's mature and has seeds, it's recommended that you're careful with it, don't disturb those seeds, and then bag it and seal that bag before discarding it, so you don't spread those seeds. Within the park system, we obviously mow our turf. It is not a targeted, strategic approach to managing stink net, but it has been successful within our parks, because as you cut the plant when it's young, it doesn't have a chance to grow those seeds and flowers. So it disrupts that cycle, although, as Kim mentioned, it is starting to adapt in other areas outside of our turf parks, so we're just going to have to keep an eye on that. With our herbicide...
Quick thing, Councilmember Hodge, you have a question?
Yes, I just have one quick question. I know we're talking about manual moving it. When we do all these, you know, like our cleanups and stuff, if they're not doing it correctly, can that change and spread it? How do we handle that, and how do we educate people when they're doing that? Because I don't want, you know, trying to help kind of, you know, create more problems. So I'm just curious.
Yes, absolutely. If it's removed improperly, it could contribute to the spread, spread of it in future. And as pointed out earlier, the five-year viability of seeds, you don't know when that's going to happen, when that spread's going to happen. So to educate folks, if there are volunteer projects or something going on, the best way is to talk through it, to educate and inform, but also to demonstrate properly how to remove it, and then differentiate between an immature plant, so something without seeds on it, compared to something with seeds and flowers.
So are we talking to like our organizations, like Keep Tempe Beautiful, and having them have that education ahead of time? Or if, you know, because I'm just concerned that we are, you know, because I know my students, they go and pick up, and I know they don't know. So I just want to make sure how we get that information out there to our public, that it's a certain way to do it.
Great question about Keep Tempe Beautiful. And I'll mention, hopefully, if I don't forget, I'll mention Keep Tempe Beautiful, as well as another community partner, Cleanup Papago. While it's not their main missions for both those organizations to remove weeds and debris, it's mostly about trash cleanup and cigarette butts and those types of things, we're hoping that we can maybe partner with them on those types of things in the future, so we'd obviously communicate the proper way to remove, remove stink net when we come to that, that point. So for herbicide use, we use pre-emergent and post-emergent. So they're what they sound like. Pre-emergent is before a plant has actually grown, before the weed has grown, which provides a preventative, a microscopic preventative barrier. The issue with using pre-emergent in areas like the preserve or natural areas is it does impact native vegetation. So we have to use it selectively, very targeted approach. We were successful in using it in an area within Lopiano Mesquite Bosque area that significantly reduced the amount of stink net that was out there this year, when it was applied previously. And then post-emergent's used to spot-treat established plants. And then it's really important for us to reapply because of the persistent seed bank, because of the five-year viability, as well as the multiple germination periods. Another note on herbicide use, that there is generally speaking, a caution, warning, danger label system. All the herbicides that we're utilizing in parks, right-ways, through our contract pathways, it's all the lowest level toxicity, so it's all caution label. So it's the least concerning of herbicides. And then one other point to mention, there are a couple of facilities within the city, the landscape around them, because the facilities are LEED certified, those areas are, in most cases, maybe not all the time for stink net, because it doesn't necessarily destroy stink net, but are using organic products. The issue with organic products in some of our areas is that they're not selective. Organic projects, organic products, for the most part, are generally not selective, so they're not going to target one specific thing. They're just going to be broadly spread, which impacts other vegetation as well. And then last being cultural practices, as Kim mentioned this as well, there are some plants, mostly kind of ground cover plants, that might grow densely enough, that could impact stink net's ability to grow. Once again, just using an overall integrated pest management program, parks, pathways, and right-aways are addressing pest issues while trying to minimize the risk to people, animals, and the environment. We're using preventative monitoring and mapping, as I mentioned earlier, some other cultural practices, such as aerating and fertilizing our turf areas, and then strategically targeting when to manually remove and when to use herbicides, based on time of year, time of growth cycle of plant. And then ultimately, like I mentioned earlier, working together with community organizations, as Councilmember Hodge had pointed out, we've connected with the Central Arizona Conservation Alliance, Southwest Vegetation Management Association, which Kim had also mentioned earlier, and then relying on the expertise of our Desert Conservation Commission. So this is probably the most important slide. So the spaces we manage as a city are very diverse, with parks, pathways, right-ways, some of our landscape maintenance around some of our facilities. We strive to provide both an aesthetically pleasing and obviously a quality experience for our community members through our implementation of an integrated pest management program. But it's very, very important, if this is the biggest takeaway you can take away from this, that we only manage a small percentage, approximately 8% of the land in Tempe when it comes to landscape maintenance, parks, those types of things, right-ways. So we really, really need to rely upon partnership and collaboration with private property owners, both residential and commercial. One of the most difficult places for us to manage, as Kim mentioned, I mentioned earlier, is our preserves, our open natural spaces. Part of that being, earlier, like I mentioned, we have to strategically apply in small amounts pre-emergent, so it makes it a little bit more difficult. And then the manual removal is very labor-intensive, especially if you're trying to remove the immature plants. So we can't widely use pre-emergent, and it's difficult to have a, just a huge project where you cover the entire preserve, 300 acres of the preserves to remove. So we're using targeted approaches to that. We need to broaden our partnerships, as mentioned earlier. So we are piloting, in the future, we're going to pilot a park steward program. So we're going to present an update to that, to the Desert Conservation Commission, hopefully at the August meeting, and then ideally piloting a park steward program in the spring. Park stewards, in addition to a whole host of other things, hopefully will be able to help us with mapping, identifying, and then maybe even some manual removal. In addition to that, park rangers will work on educational opportunities on hikes with a ranger, which will also include information about staying on trail, which is really important for people to stay on trail, both bikers and hikers, because that's a way for stink net to get spread. And then also provide some native vegetation information on those hikes, as well as information about invasive plants and weeds. Additionally, our preserve management plan will hopefully conclude towards the end of the year. That preserve management plan will include recommendations on signage and elimination of spider trails, which will also keep people on the main trails, and that signage will help keep you along those trails as well throughout our, throughout the preserves. Additionally, we'll look to expand opportunities in the Tempe Today, Tempe Weekly, website information, and partner with other organizations, as you mentioned, Keep Tempe Beautiful and Cleanup Papago. Those aren't their main missions, but hopefully we can, not just those organizations, hopefully there's some other community-based organizations that we can work with. And like I said, the biggest takeaway, it's imperative that we really communicate with private property owners, whether that's through neighborhood mailers, whether that's through our community enhancement team, through door hangers and mailers, or code enforcement, so to speak, but really making sure private property owners and even residential owners understand that they're responsible for beyond just what they consider their property. So essentially, everything from the back of the curb, so including the sidewalk in front of their house, as well as into the alley, they're responsible for those weeds. So providing that information, education to them in multiple ways is going to be imperative for us, because it's going to take a persistent effort in order to mitigate the spread of stink net.
With that, if you have any questions? Sounds good. Thank you, Alex. I've got quite a few questions here. I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, I was pulling out stink weed, actually, last week on the right-of-way. I noticed that my hand started stinging really badly, and so please wear gloves, because it hurts. It's really toxic. So I wanted to just throw that out there, just so the public knows not to do this without a glove on, gloves on. And then perhaps the park rangers, because also if they see the stink net, you know, when they're out there, pull it and educate the residents around them, like this is a bad, a bad, bad guy, and pull it out and make sure they put sealed bags.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I just, anyway, that just came up. But yeah, it does, it does hurt, so don't do it barehanded.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you for your extremely fast presentation. I loved that, but thank you so much for all the information. And Kim, thank you so much for all the information that you shared also. I appreciate, I read the Tempe Today, and I saw that there's some information that's in there that you guys just put out. But I was also wondering if maybe we can send this information to the chamber, and they can share it with their businesses, and then maybe the businesses can then share that also. And then you mentioned, I put down here Shauna, Shauna, poor Shauna's here again, I'm going to give her another thing. But yeah, sending it out to the neighborhood associations also to be able to get that in their hands. So, but thank you so much for what you're doing, and Kim, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Shauna, can we get maybe the neighborhoods to do like a presentation that they can show or do when they're picking out their yards? Also, I asked our esteemed city manager, can we send it out on our water bills? Because that can be something that could be read, and also, I don't know if Chris Baxter's here, in our newsletter. I mean, just any way we can do to bring it, bring more information out, but not just send it out and talk about it, I mean, actually explain like a little one-sheeter, because that's something we can have, that we can have to explain what to do, what not to do. Like she said, don't use, you need gloves. I mean, just things like that, a checklist, so we can, when we send this information out to do it, we show them the proper way, so we don't spread it. So just wondering, that could be something we add to it also.
Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Garland, councilmembers, great point on the neighborhood association's HOAs. Park rangers have attended several neighborhood association meetings over the last six months, we'll give it. And while they haven't talked about stink net specifically, that's a great idea, that in addition to them talking about safety and park-related safety and feeling of safety, this is another topic for them to be able to present on at association meetings or neighborhood meetings. Thank you for that.
Sounds good. Any other councilmembers, any further comments or questions on this item? All right. Sounds good. Alex, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Very thorough. That is going to bring me back to item number 6A, Items Ready for City Council Direction or Status Update. First of all, I have item 6A1, Human Services and Community Safety Council Committee update. Is everyone from staff giving a presentation on that one this evening? All right. I see Parrish, Parrish and Sarah. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Parrish Spies, Assistant to Councilmember Doreen Garland, and I'm joined today by Sarah Keown, Assistant to Councilmember Navarro. And we are the staff for the Human Services Community Safety Council Committee, that is co-chaired by Councilmembers Garland and Navarro. So first, the guiding principles of our performance, are the performance measures related to safe and secure communities and quality of life. So this really guides the work of the committee. And the objective of the committee is to engage stakeholders and the community, and use data to design policies that ensure the feeling of community safety and to meet the growing needs of human services. The priorities that drive the work have been related to the feeling of community safety, responding to the opioid epidemic, improving our ability to address homelessness and housing needs, and to meet the other growing needs of human services, such as mental health. And now Sarah will share with you some of the highlights.
Thank you, Parrish. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share highlights of the topics that were covered at the Human Services and Community Safety Committee this past year. As you can see, the committee provided oversight and guidance on various topics such as lithium battery safety, opioid crisis Tempe innovation solution, and silver living homes, just to name a few. Here are some of the areas where the committee were able to make an impact. Most notably, the committee enhances the city's tobacco ordinance to prohibit individuals under the age of 21 from purchasing vape and tobacco products. Additionally, we added a retail licensing component that requires all tobacco retailers to complete a state-managed certification. As of today, we have a 91% compliance rate. The committee also advocated for the development of the mental health roadmap, which was created to assist individuals and families in navigating available resources, both in print and on the city's website. The committee also supported the staff process to meet the requirements for the city to receive the age-friendly community designation by the American Association of Retired Persons. I would like to take a moment to extend appreciation to Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Navarro for chairing this committee, to the residents and the stakeholders who provide valuable input, and to the dedicated staff who work tirelessly on the behalf of the committee. If there are any questions, Parrish and I would be happy to address them at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Any questions or comments?
Great job.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. That brings me to item 6A2, Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee update. And I see Ty and Brooke coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ty Lee, Council Assistant to Councilmember Arlene Chin. I am joined by Brooke St. George, who is the Assistant to the Vice Mayor Adams. As staff liaisons, we are here today to present a summary of the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee and what they accomplished this year.
Under Council's strategic priority of sustainable growth and development, this committee touches on six separate performance measures. And while under the strategic priority of financial stability and vitality, this committee focuses on four performance measures. Newly added to the work plan this year are 4.04, solid waste and landfill diversion, and 5.13 unemployment rate.
The SEV Committee is co-chaired by Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Chin, and the primary objective of the SEV Committee is to ensure Tempe develops and promotes innovative programs, infrastructure, and policy that fosters a sustainable, resilient, and economically vibrant community for both residents and businesses.
The SEV Council Committee has four stated priorities. Two of them are focused on sustainability, to support the implementation of the City of Tempe Climate Action Plan, and to identify and prioritize potential green infrastructure investments. With regards to the economic vitality of the city, this committee has outlined two priorities: the support of economic development's key strategies, with a focus on innovation hubs, such as the Downtown District, Apache Boulevard, and Papago/North Tempe, and the creation of a toolbox of strategies, resources, and communication plans to support growth for existing businesses and attract new businesses to Tempe.
And so some of the highlights from the past year include the promotion of the International Green Construction Code, which was adopted by the council in the fall of 2023. This committee has also championed the Range Roots Program, which will expand green stormwater systems throughout the city, and has been an early promoter of the upcoming Community Tree Stewart Program called Growing Together. This Growing Together program is an effort jointly led by the Sustainability and Community Services Department, and has been encouraged by the SEV Committee. It will expand our tree canopy in Tempe while offering workforce development opportunities. We'd also like to highlight that this committee has long been advocating for fiber internet connectivity throughout the city of Tempe.
This concludes our presentation, and we welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation, council. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just want to thank both of you for the presentation, and you both do such a great job supporting Councilmember Chin and myself, so I really appreciate it, and I think it's been a really good year. We've got a lot done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ty. Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate it. Next up, 6A3, Workforce Readiness and Livable Communities Council Committee update. Welcome, Sapan.
Good evening, Mayor Woods. Esteemed members of Tempe City Council, it is an honor and privilege to be standing before you here today, or tonight, as I want to give a recap of all the work that the Workforce Readiness and Livable Communities Council Committee has accomplished over the past year. As Mayor Woods mentioned, my name is Sapan Dalazada. I am the Council Assistant to Councilmember Berdette Hodge. So this council committee has a lot of different focus areas. It's a very, very broad committee, and that's by intention, because workforce readiness and livable communities means a lot of different things. So you can see, it fits under different buckets, as I like to say: safe and secure communities, strong community connections, quality of life, sustainable growth and development, and financial stability and vitality. So the primary objective of the committee- So the primary objective of the committee is to ensure that Tempe develops and promotes innovative programs, infrastructure, and policies that foster a sustainable, resilient, and economically vibrant community for both residents and businesses. Our mission is to address issues related to education, youth development, and workforce readiness for residents and the business community. And I've always been taught that a city is like a house. It needs to be built on strong foundations, strong infrastructure to thrive. And that's what this work of this committee is, to ensure that there are jobs, good-paying jobs, quality education, a clean city, good infrastructure. So that's what we're doing here with this committee. So here are some of the priorities: enhancing Tempe's pathways to become a cradle-to-career city for residents of all ages, engaging in programs designed to support veterans, creating a toolbox of strategies, resources, and communication plans to support growth for existing businesses and attract new businesses to Tempe, and advocate for implementation of key legacy community development initiatives. So here are the highlights. I'm not going to get into every single one, but I want to point out that the city's relationship with the school districts has become so strong thanks to the work of this committee, to the point that the superintendents feel comfortable reaching out to the council members with any questions they have, whether they be Tempe Union, Tempe Elementary, or Kyrene. Our Office of Career Education and Family Services has done great work, thanks to the work that council members Hodge and Keating have done to ensure that Tempe PRI is fully funded, for instance. Not only that, we've formed strong relationships with ASU, already had a strong relationship with ASU, but we've heard multiple times from various vice presidents from ASU, and have heard from Mesa Community College and Rio Salado Community College, which is very important because a lot of Tempe students go to those community colleges after graduation. Most importantly, though, I want to point out that our committee was the originating committee for two city ordinances. One is the prevailing wage ordinance, and one is the Housing Affordability and Source of Income Protection Ordinance. So two ordinances came out of this committee, as well as a new HR policy to provide leave for Tempe employees who are going out of state for medical procedures. And I will be happy to take any questions or comments right now, but there's two people I want to thank really quickly. First is our Chief of Staff, Tanya Chavez, who is our North Star, who is a mentor, who is a leader, who helps us get a lot of things done. So Tanya, thank you so much. And the second is my former council assistant colleague, Annie Mazzarella, who was Councilmember Keating's assistant for over two years. Annie was really a partner, and we got so much done because we worked so well together. So Annie, if you're watching this in Washington, DC, we miss you every day, and we know you're doing big things. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, feedback.
Thank you so much, Sapan. Great presentation. Councilwoman Hodge?
I just want to say thank you. I was going to say, we should have had a pop-out of Annie standing right next to you, because you're the only one who had to do it by yourself, but she was there in spirit. Thank you for so much work that you've done, and I just want to thank, at this time, thank all of our council assistants, because even though you may be assigned to one of us, I feel like I can ask any one of you guys a question, and you will be there to help at any time. So just thank each and every one of you guys for all that you do. You know, you are our left and right hand.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Very well-stated. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Wonderful. That brings us to item 6B, Council Committees in Progress Updates as Needed. Do any council members have updates on item 6B1, 6B2, or 6B3? Okay, that moves me to item number seven, Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilwoman Garland?
I know that this discussion and the idea that I have is going to be too late for Fourth of July, but I think we can start working on something before New Year's. But I would like to have a presentation on illegal fireworks in our neighborhoods. You know, there's a concern with some of our veterans, there's a concern for residents with neurodiversity, and there's a concern for our four-legged family members. And I think that this is, every year we start getting phone calls the evening of or the day after Fourth of July or New Year's, with people calling and saying their pets are upset or people are shooting off illegal fireworks in the neighborhoods. And I know that it's a difficult thing to try to capture those people, but I think we need to start doing something more to protect our residents, the safety of our residents, and the well-being of our animals. So if we could have some type of presentation, I understand, I was just told that this is a misdemeanor if somebody is caught doing this, but I would just like to know some more information and what else we can do for our residents. And then can our residents step up and volunteer and help us, or how do they become our eyes and ears out in the community? So just something like that would be helpful.
Sounds good. Thank you. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garland, absolutely. We'll have that agendized.
Councilwoman Hodge?
You know what? I just want to add that she's absolutely correct, because I spoke with the town of Guadalupe, and they're having a lot of concerns and a lot of issues with it. And they don't have the capacity to have as much law enforcement around it, and we had our law enforcement come out. So this is a really strong topic that has come up several times. I have one more thing. I don't know how we could address this or bring it into council, but I know what we have with our new program with the schools and with safety, I want to see if we could have the Sandy Hook Promise. I know some cities are doing it, I know school districts are doing it, but I would love for us to have that. So we sign off on that, too, that we make a promise. You know, it's a Sandy Hook Promise, so I think we would have to research how other cities done it, but I've heard other cities have signed that, onto that promise. So I would like that.
All right, Madam City Manager?
Yes, no problem, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any other future agenda items any council members would like added? Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, my earlier suggestion, I think, probably would be a work-study item for David Tavoras to present on all the new sustainability initiatives that we're doing in the city. So I think that'd be really great. But I think it's more of a work-study, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Vice Mayor, absolutely.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other items for future agenda items? All right, hearing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda, which brings me to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session will be on September 17, 2024. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.